All rise, please. Good afternoon, everyone. Before the start of today's regular meeting, we met in executive session to discuss the settlement in the Hammerstein property. Our solicitor will go into more detail with the stipulation and what we intend to have agree on and have entered as an order for court. So with that, any visitors or public comment? We will be addressing the Hammerstein stipulation in a few minutes. So if anybody has any comments on that, you might want to wait. Any other visitors or public comments? Hello, Mr. Malloy. Hi, neighbor. I'm saying hi to you.
You, Mr. Malloy.
You, Mr. Malloy. Anybody else? Okay, hearing none, moving along. The next meeting of this board will be Tuesday, October 18th, at 7:00 p.m. The Doylestown Township Board of Supervisors, along with the Ways and Means Committee, will hold a budget work session immediately following this meeting tonight. The Board of Supervisors will hold an additional budget work session meeting on Tuesday, October 18th, at 4:00 p.m. here. Please, you're all welcome to attend, and everybody out there listening, please come. We're going to be closed Monday, October 10th, for Columbus Day. The Bucks County Association Township Officials Education Series is going to be hosted by Doylestown Township. It's tackling the county's opioid crisis. The reason why this is an important meeting is that we are going to be doing Narcan training for residents. So if you know anybody in this area, friends, neighbors, that need to have Narcan in their homes, you can get it at this event. You need to be trained. You come, get trained, you leave with some Narcan to help protect your children. Or any loved one. Sensory Trail Dedication Ribbon Cutting, very exciting, is Thursday, October 13th, at 4:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. in Central Park. The Halloween event, the big Halloween with dogs and everything, is October 22nd, Central Park, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. CB Care's 2016 Pumpkin Fest follows Halloween on October 22nd at the Moravian Tower Works, and that starts at 2:00 p.m. The Environmental Advisory Council Fall Speaker Series begins with Restoring Nature's Relationships. Doug Taumee is the guest speaker, October 27th, at 6:00 p.m., Delaware Valley University. It's $10 per person. Students are free, and we have tickets here at the Township Building for that event. And the Doylestown Township Leaf and Yard Waste Recycling drop-off is every third Saturday of the month, March through December, 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. at the New Britain Road, access to Central Park. Okay. Anything else that we need to announce? Okay. Oh, I do. Bright green. We are going to do the first-ever movie in the park in celebration of Halloween, October 29th. It's for kids and all family members. Hotel Transylvania. Hotel Transylvania, it's our first-ever movie in the park. It's going to be fun. So, October 29th, it'll be about dark time. Look on DoylestownRec.com for more information, and you'll be hearing more about that. All right, next item is minutes approval from the regular meeting of September 20th, 2016. Did everyone have an opportunity to review the minutes?
Yes.
Any changes, corrections? I don't see any. None?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
And then the meeting notes from...
Just a minute. I don't think Mr. Two-Hill was there.
Aye, so abstain.
One exception.
Yep.
You got it? Thank you. Thank you. October 20th, budget work session began at 2:00 p.m. minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Also, I'm having...
Aye, abstain.
There's no indication on here that Mr. Two-Hill wasn't there either. It's not in the minutes.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
It wasn't...
It was in the...
It was in the first one.
Not in the second.
But it's not in the budget work session. It doesn't mention him at all, but he was not there.
Okay. So, we're going to... Did we already call a question? Can we amend the minutes to reflect that Mr. Two-Hill was not present on September 20th at the budget work session?
Somebody has their finger up there.
Use... No, no, no.
I can't hear.
Oh, wait. Oh, yeah. Mr. Paternoster did ask ahead of time that we please use the microphone, so he can hear.
My suggestion, or my... The motion was to approve the minutes, and I wanted it noted in the minutes that Mr. Two-Hill was not at the budget meeting. And now I think the chair is going to ask if we'll take the motion amended.
That would be for the budget meeting.
Budget.
Everyone approve that amendment?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Correspondences? Any?
Yeah.
All right. Reports from the solicitor.
I'll have some comments later in the agenda. Madam Chairperson?
Lieutenant?
Off the report.
Well, I want to tell you that you guys did an awesome job for the Travis Mannion...
You're taking away my report.
But I also, you know, I know Ryan has some more comments about this. I know you guys are really working hard to get out in the community, and we totally champion that. I mean, not only just be out there doing their police work, but be out there and be more, you know, visible and user-friendly. So I really appreciate that, and, you know, pass that on to them. Township engineer?
Nothing.
Manager? You have a lot.
Yes, I do have a lot. Bear with me. So first up is the Director of Operations position. As we know, Mr. John will be retiring March 21st of 2017, and although I think we kind of can't imagine the township without Dick, where March will be here before we know it. So we've undertaken the responsibility of filling that anticipated vacancy. We had 12 candidates apply for the position after it was advertised. We interviewed six and brought forth two candidates for consideration to the board. I think it became very apparent through the interview process that Mr. Dave Tomco was the best candidate for this position and think the best fit for our organization. Mr. Tomco is a graduate at Temple University with a bachelor's science degree in civil engineering construction technology. He spent the last 14 years working for Panoni Associates, project manager, working with different municipalities. He brings over 20 years of municipal design experience to the position, and he served as president and partnership, TMA, Transportation Management Association, Montgomery County, and is very involved in his church. He has met all of the conditions of employment set forth in Mr. Garten's letter, and at this time, you know, he had good reference checks and everything, and therefore I would like to recommend that the Board of Supervisors, in accordance with our non-uniform personnel manual, hire Mr. Tomco to serve as our next Director of Operations effective October 31st.
We all had the chance to, you know, meet with that interview and the finalists, and certainly my recommendation that we hire Mr. Tomco to fill the position of Director of Operations and bring him on to be able to transition accordingly.
I agree. I think Dave is going to be a great addition.
Okay, agree.
Absolutely. A good choice.
We'll entertain a motion to...
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. Thank you. All right, number two on your agenda, madam.
Number two?
Number two?
Yes. Number two is the boards and commissions. We always ask our current members whether they'd like to continue in their roles, and they have responded, and as you can see, we have 12 vacancies coming for 2017. In addition to these that we will need to fill, I'd like us to add the 200th Anniversary Committee to the list, and I don't know if you want Mr. Garten to prepare a resolution as to the number of people you'd like on that committee and whether or not you allow maybe just, you know, members at large as well in that regard. But we would like to move forward with advertising and setting up interviews for either at the end of the year or certainly first thing in the beginning of the year.
Yeah, we want to get this rocking and rolling as soon as possible in early 2017. It's going to take us a year to plan it, get all these great ideas up and going and selected. I would recommend that we have a committee of perhaps nine folks. I really like that idea.
Sounds good.
With a liaison from the board, maybe another board member to serve on that committee in addition to the liaison, and the rest from members of the public, Doylestown Township residents. Good?
Good.
Great.
Okay, so would you mind? It's a...
I'll prepare it.
It's a beginning and an end committee.
It'll be a sunset committee.
Exactly.
End of 2018.
All right, thank you.
And I assume the motion is to advertise for these vacancies, or are those enough?
No, we're going to move forward with that, as we always do.
Thank you.
All right, so first was the creation or authorization for the creation of committee, and then the second is you'd like to motion...
I'd like to make a motion that we advertise in the newspapers, as we normally do with the block ads, for vacancies on our boards and commissions.
And add the bicentennial committee to this list.
Correct.
All right. If there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you.
Next, we have... This came out of the Pension Committee at our last meeting, and this is for the amendments to the defined contribution. We need an authorization to advertise that.
All right, there's a cleanup of... That requires amendments to Township Ordinance 368 regarding the non-uniform defined contribution plan. Is there a motion to approve the amendments?
It's to authorize its advertisement.
Authorize, thank you.
Yes.
Authorize the cleanup of the amendments.
The advertisement, yeah. There's a motion. I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And lastly, if you recall, we had Princeton Hydro come out, met with Dick over at the Sawerman Pond at Sawerman Park. We have their letter evaluation. We've not received anything else from them at this time, but it does give you a summary of what's kind of going on out there at the pond. And if you recall, probably 20-some years ago, it was recommended... We had talked to the board at the time about 20 years ago about aerating the pond, and it was determined that it... We worked with Dell Valley University at the time, college then, to just let it grow in because they didn't want to do the aeration and everything of it. So it looks like it is kind of growing in, but Princeton Hydro feels there are opportunities that may be able to kind of revive it and maybe make it more of a wetland storm basin for us. I was thinking, and Dick and I were talking, that perhaps we would send this to the Park Board and the Environmental Advisory Council for further evaluation, if that would be okay, and maybe they'll come up with some ideas. And, you know, obviously nothing will be done for '17, but it might be something on the horizon for grants and things for 2018.
It looked like it's really not in the best of shape. We've got to get moving on it.
It's grown in, which is what they wanted to do 20 years ago.
I mean, are you saying the earliest we can get working on it is the spring, and they can't do much during the winter? Is it...
I don't know when that grant application is going to be due, supposedly this year yet, but I suspect it's going to be spring 2017 before they do it.
That's when the grant would probably be due would be in the springtime. We can maybe analyze between now and then, put the grant in, see if something comes that wouldn't start until '18.
Wow.
Yeah.
I'll keep quiet for a minute, but, I mean, it's really...
Are we in a position that we need to do something regardless if we try to clean it up or not? I mean, it kind of... The way I interpret it was that pets, animals, if kids fell in it accidentally, it is not in good shape, and we need... So we either protect pets and people from going in it, or we do something else. So I'm cautious about waiting to '18 to do, or '17 to do anything. If there's things we can do to mitigate some of it, in the short term, we probably should have the committees evaluate those options as well.
Sure. There are signs, right? Do not swim.
Yeah, do not swim and fish, and, yeah. So refer to the groups to come back to with the recommendation.
I would ask the EAC to take the lead on this, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I do. All right, thanks. All right. Any else?
I have... That's all I have.
Okay, we'll begin... We'll go next to supervisors' comments. Ryan, I know you're chomping at the bit, too.
Well, I just wanted to reiterate, Barb, we had over 3,500 runners last Sunday at Fon Hill Park with, you know, with spectators combined. There were over 5,000 people there, and the Doylestown Township Police did a fantastic job. So please send my thanks for... I mean, and they seem like they're having a great time out there, too. They seem like they had a lot of fun. And, you know, the other thing, I was just showing Ken and Barb before the meeting, I saw just on our Doylestown... The Doylestown Facebook page, which has thousands of followers, somebody had posted a picture of one of your officers that had just shown up because somebody's pumpkin, little kid's pumpkins had been smashed, and he showed up the next day with a new pumpkin. So, you know, like Barb was saying, just seeing the officers out in the town and working with the community and socializing with the community, you know, it's really nice to see, so...
Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah. And that's all for me.
Okay. Shaun, you have anything?
Yeah, just two comments. One, just a thank you, because not only was I unable to come to the last meetings that we mentioned, but I wasn't able to attend my EAC or Park and Rec meeting. So I want to thank everybody. It was for both personal, family reasons, and I want to thank everybody for their condolences. We had two deaths in the family. And as well as, at the time of the interview, I guess, we may have... I may have... I guess I was at the ER at the time of Stephanie's about, but... At event, so we had some personal issues. But again, thank you for everybody's kind words and head thoughts. Thank you.
Okay. Narcan, you have any?
That's all.
Thank you.
Yes, just one comment. Just wanted to expand a little bit about... You had made the comment that we're doing the budget workshop after this meeting again, and this is... We have a series of these throughout the year, but I wanted to encourage everybody to stay for that, if you had time, to encourage these things, because I think it's important for you to understand and hear the level of detail and scrutiny that goes into them. So the process has been changing quite a bit over the past two years, so... And we keep going back and looking at what we can do to make it better and better. The Ways and Means Committee and the staff and everybody else, they're really opening their eyes and trying to say, what can we do to improve this whole process? So it's a working process. We keep changing it, but it's really, really good. So I would encourage everybody to...
I think it's a great process. I think what we're doing is great. Thanks. Ken, you have anything else?
No, that's it.
Brittany?
First of all, I didn't realize we had a Ken and Barb up here, so...
Oh, God!
Just thought of that, you know, kind of...
Oh, my God. This is the first time I thought of it. Ken and Barb.
I mean, anybody knows I like to have fun. I like to do things, like I like to work hard, but I like to have fun doing it. And unfortunately, I'm deadly serious now. I received a disturbing letter a couple of months ago. The letter implying that one of our board members, Mr. Two-Hill, is not... That the board was not doing anything regarding Shaun Two-Hill's zoning issues, his environmental issues, and other violations. And the board has addressed those issues. We have been working on that. We've been working with Shaun Two-Hill. We're not making the progress that we had hoped. You said you'd give us updates. We never got updates. None of us here have ever received any updates. And now we get another letter that the implication is this board's covering it up. And I want to get it out in the open. This is not... Nothing that's being covered up. We've been working on it. There's many issues. There's many violations. We've worked through some of them. Some of them are still open. And in fact, I don't even know if the resident that's sent it is here. I don't know the person, so it's... You don't have to identify yourself if you are here. But I want our residents to know that the four of us on this board have, on several occasions, brought all of Shaun Two-Hill's violations regarding our township ordinances to him. And we've gotten nebulous responses, calls for meetings from his lawyer, and, you know, it's very troubling. We all work hard to keep our integrity at a high level, and when my integrity as a board member is besmirched because it's implied that I'm doing something to cover up, my word, cover up all that Mr. Two-Hill's getting away with, that hurts me hopefully deeply. I mean, the fact that... And I'll address this to Jeff, maybe, as to help resolve some of this, but, you know, the fact that Mr. Two-Hill has had zoning violations, the fact that he, in my opinion, pushes the legal boundaries as far as he can go until he's caught, if he's caught, and then he rectifies the situation. He puts the integrity of this entire Board of Supervisors up for question. And the fact that he's charged with violations by the DEP and was visited by the SPCA due to residence concerns, and even on this Hammerstein, I mean, we find out things as we go along. And again, my question... That plus everything else, my question to Jeff, because the residents will... Maybe the more cynical ones, but many of them will respect your answer more than my reasons and answers I've been giving him. But the Board of Supervisors has to treat Mr. Two-Hill the same as any other resident, that we can't hold him to a higher standard. We'd like to hold him to a higher standard, but we can't. So I'll bounce it to Jeff to just kind of, hopefully, amplify and reinforce what I said.
Well, as I... As you mentioned, as when the first... This issue first came to light, I advised the staff, who has the primary responsibility, that is Stephanie Mason at Sinclair Salisbury, that Mr. Two-Hill is treated no better or no worse than any other resident of this township. He doesn't get special treatment either way, and I think Stephanie's prepared to explain what's been going on at her end, because obviously she and Sinclair have carried the burden here as far as all these issues that have arisen related to the Two-Hill property, where the farm mark's located. So I'll let Stephanie respond, but that has been my instructions to the staff from day one.
Just for clarification, we're talking about 925 Sandy Ridge Road. There is another Two-Hill property that is subject of concern that we're, at this point, was not a subject.
Okay. Yes, we have taken the concerns raised by the resident very seriously and have gone out to the property on a number of occasions. I will say that, as Mr. Colallo indicated, we've pointed out a number of issues and violations, and those have been addressed and are being addressed. And so, in a sense, we have what I would say is a cooperative property owner, but it is sort of... Issues have arisen, and you might refer to it as those who ask permission versus those who ask forgiveness. But it certainly, you know, has been cooperative, and we've addressed all the issues. I've reached out to the resident who raised the concerns and have offered to meet with them, and I'm sure we will be meeting in the near future to explain where we are and what is permitted with regard to the activities that take place on that property. But we have not... We have taken Mr. Garten's words to heart and have certainly spent a lot of time responding to the concerns raised.
I just want to piggyback a little bit off Rick's saying and just publicly say that I know the recommendation from our solicitor was to treat Mr. Two-Hill no better and no worse than any other township resident, but, you know, as a supervisor, I disagree with that. I believe that we should be held to a higher standard, that we should not be subject to violations. We hold elected office. We were elected by the residents of Doylestown Township, and with that, there's a certain responsibility that comes with being a township supervisor. So I am very upset by this. I've been very upset by this, and I'm not happy that we're spending exorbitant amount of time talking about this and that our staff is spending an exorbitant amount of time working through issues with one of our supervisors that's supposed to be representing the residents of this township and working through their issues. And I just want to publicly state that.
And it may appear that Mr. Two-Hill's being sabotaged tonight, but this is not the first time he has heard us speak in this regard. He's a professional developer, and he knows the rules, and we told him once before to clean up his act, and we're just finding out that certain things are still hanging. And some of the violations go back to March 2016, but his notices go back to March... I mean, excuse me, May, and this is now October. He shouldn't have been in a position of violating anything. We told him, you know, our last conversation with him about this, and we asked him to get it cleaned up as quickly as possible and keep us informed, which he did not. And he did not clean up things as quickly as possible. Now Stephanie and Sinclair might say he's been cooperative, but I agree with the sentiments expressed by my colleagues. I think we do have to hold ourselves to a higher standard, and it's not that he doesn't know better. He does know better. Should never have been in a position to be a violation, and once caught, and he was caught, he should have cleaned up his act immediately and not put this board in this position to have to go public with his nonsense. And the reason why, you know, it's now... We're now addressing it is because we learned from this resident that there's still things going on that may have to be addressed, and he has a property on 35 Chapman that he says is owned by his parents, but it is our understanding that he might have two illegal apartments on that property as well. And we're told that he hasn't been given us access to examine... The zoning department access to examine because it's not his property, it's owned by his parents. So there's that shell game going on there, too. So I'm disclosing that publicly as well, and it's got to stop, and I think... I don't know, I'm not going to speak for Mr. Snyder, but I think it's the entire board that's had enough.
We've... I support everything that you've heard up to this point, and I don't want to make this a crucifixion to Shaun. He knows the issues. Hopefully, they're remedied immediately, and we've had, as Barb mentioned, I just wanted to echo, we've had these discussions in the past with Shaun, so this is not the first time. And I really believe it is unfortunate we have to share this with you because... But it is something that we need to be as transparent as we possibly can about this whole thing, so we do what we got to do.
I know you probably want to respond something.
Yeah, can I comment?
Yeah, absolutely.
Without going into minutia or details at all, I would recommend, because unfortunately, in these kind of circumstances, it often can be said there's a he said, she said, or he said, he said kind of situation. So I'm not going to comment other than I recommend that if anybody wants to really get to the bottom of it, to just look at the facts. And I think, and I can say that the township has been very professional, and they have done their job and treated me just like I am as any other resident, no better, no worse. So to all the staff, they've done exactly what they're supposed to do, and I would say to determine whether that's true or not, look into it, dig into it. I believe, again, both Stephanie, Jeff, the planners, Sinclair, everybody that I've been met with have been very helpful, and I would recommend that just look at the facts rather than hearsay. In addition, I would say, just one comment, I just believe there's one thing that's pretty incorrect that has to do with the property on Chapman Road. Stephanie, can I address that with you real quick? Just that I believe that Sinclair has... This is... Understand, this is bigger. This is a property where I grew up as a child, and my parents lived there and owned the property where we live with our family. There's been an accusation of two illegal apartments. We have had Sinclair, on a moment's notice, when requested, inspect the property, had confirmed all that, that there is no violations of that property. Beyond that, I just wanted to address that specifically because that was mentioned at the end. Other than that, I would just recommend, there's always two sides to every story, and I'd recommend...
I take offense to you saying there's two sides to every story, Shaun. You were delivered violations. You were in clear violation. There's... That's not two sides to every story. You had violations on your property that you were told had to be fixed by a certain date. So it's not...
And they were.
It's not two sides to every story. No, not everything has been addressed. --two sides to every story. No, not everything has been addressed. Not everything has been addressed.
There's nothing I can say that, I guess, satisfy that, unless you look into it.
Well, I mean, but, but don't peg us to be like, it's our side versus your side.
I just said everybody's--
I'm just saying, don't do that, because that's not the truth. That's not the case. The case is, as a supervisor, you have violations. You have several violations for several different things, and we've, and you have not come to us. We've had to find out about them. We've had to talk to you about it, and you do the same thing with us. Well, I'm not going to get into the minutia and the details. Well, you owe it to us and to the public to get in the minutia and the detail.
I understand.
You are a supervisor representing this township, okay?
I had been advised and understood that it was inappropriate to talk about an open zoning--
Right, because now you have lawyers involved. So, yeah, I guess it is, but, but don't, but don't state that there are two sides to every story, because there's not, this is not a story. All right.
Sorry for the use of word "story." Rather, just look into the facts. That's all I recommend.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything further?
No.
One happy note I would like to report. I had a meeting with the Village Improvement Association, and Jim Brexler, CEO of the hospital, reported that Becker's Hospital Review has designated Doylestown Hospital one of the top 100 heart institutes in the country. And just so you know, they're going to be doing another expansion, because that's who they are, and they're growing and doing very well, and they're starting to meet with our staff now to plan out the expansion, I guess primarily of the Heart Institute. So be on the lookout for that, and I suspect there's going to be a huge capital campaign that we're all going to be asked to contribute to, so be on the lookout for that as well. So I think, congratulations to Doylestown Hospital, Doylestown Health for this tremendous honor. All right, hearing no other supervisors' comments, we're now ready for a proposed amendment to the floodplain ordinance. A public hearing is required.
If I may, by way of background, the board will recall that you adopted a floodplain ordinance as a result of efforts by FEMA and PMA to adopt new floodplain regulations. Once you did that, you're required to take your existing zoning ordinance and make adjustments to that to reflect the fact that you adopted a new floodplain ordinance. Judy Stern-Goldstein prepared that general document, was reviewed by your planning commission, and you authorized its advertisement, which I have done both with the intelligence and the Bucks County Law Library. So you are ready for a public hearing. However, in your packet was a letter from the Bucks County Planning Commission dated September 7 that had a couple of minor edifications or editorial comments that really are just one letter missing and a number transposed. So they'll be fixed, and any motion to approve would be subject to that. But Judy would like to address their comment number one, which had to do with 100% versus 95%. Just so you had an answer to that before you decided where you were proceeding with this particular ordinance.
If I may. The one section they're referring to is 175, the section they're referring to is 175-27, which we know as the site capacity calculations. It's part of the zoning ordinance that determines the net buildable site area, and then therefore the amount of impervious surface that a developer can put on the land essentially. In that ordinance, currently, it had been 100% protection for the calculation. In the amendment, it's 95% protection, and that is because in the separate floodplain ordinance, there are certain things that can be done on the floodplain with permits. So to keep the protection at 100%, we necessitate someone to get relief from the floodplain ordinance, then come back and get relief from the zoning ordinance for something they're already permitted to do. We were cleaning up that inconsistency, and in the spirit of being a commonwealth and letting landowners have the right to their property as long as they follow the regulations, we thought it was appropriate.
Okay.
So if the board was inclined at the public hearing to approve the adoption of the ordinance, it would be subject to the editorial comments at item number two of the Bucks County Planning Commission's September 7, 2016 letter.
All right, board, anybody have any conversation regarding this proposed amendment?
No.
Yeah, I make the motion, we--
Okay. Public, anyone out there will have any comments? We want to hear from you if you do. Hearing none, go ahead.
I'll second, I'll second Ken's--
There's a motion to approve with the comment, editorial comments. And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you for your time. Thank you, Judy.
Judy?
Can you give me a minute to morph into the next topic here?
Please take your time. I know I need morphing time, too, sometimes.
Okay, the next item that I'm going to spend some time with the board and the public on is the Hammerstein site. Board will recall that in 2014, parties submitted an application with the zoning hearing board seeking effectively certain variances so that the Hammerstein site on East Road could be utilized in addition to a museum for a theater and other particular uses. Those hearings continued for a good number of meetings. I'm not sure exactly how many, but in any event, the board of, Board of the Zoning Hearing Board denied the application on or about June 29 of 2015. Following that denial, the property owners filed an appeal with the Court of Common Pleas of Bucks County. I would note that the parties to the proceedings before the zoning hearing board and the parties to the proceeding before the court matter would be, in addition to the township and the applicant, were the Doylestown Country Club and Mr. and Mrs. Malloy. Following that appeal, I believe it's fair to say that the property owners and the neighbors, being Mr. and Mrs. Malloy and the Country Club folks, engaged in probably six months of discussions about the entire application, the use of the property and the like. In the spring of this year, I believe Mr. Van Louveney came to this board, and am I right about the spring, John, to discuss what the parties had proposed by way of a resolution of the matter--
July 19.
July, but before that, I think you shared a draft of that which I shared with the supervisors, that being a stipulation plan. There have been discussions with the board and also a public discussion in July of this year outlining some of the issues that are noted. And I want to go through what's proposed in the stipulation so that if, if the board's inclined to approve it and the other parties approve it and it becomes a court order, you'll know what the implications are. Well, first of all, the property will be developed in accordance with the plan dated August 17, 2015, last revised November 3 of 2015. And except as noted in this particular stipulation, it'll be developed in accordance with all federal, state, and municipal ordinances, including the zoning ordinance subdivision, land development ordinance, stormwater ordinance, and the like. Now, what's particularly noted herein is that the parties will agree that the property may be used for a museum. The museum is not a permitted use, however, the stipulation will permit the property to be used as a museum. Before people wonder what's next, there will be no theater. The existing barn, which is on the site, will be expanded in a minor way to that portion of the barn that was previously existing, so that the appearance of the barn will be substantially in accordance with the way it looked during its utilization by the Hammerstein family. And in addition, the stipulation will require the open space, impervious surface, and all area requirements shall be consistent with the zoning ordinance as identifying it as all other uses. The areas on the property, other than the impervious surface, detention basin, wooded areas, shall be maintained as lawn. Unless noted otherwise, it'll be the, the, developed will be consistent with the lot area and dimensional requirements set forth in Section 175-39 being all other uses. Thirty-five parking spaces will be provided on-site for the library and museum. Valet parking will be utilized in the event there's any special events or occasions when the parking on-site exceeds the available number of spaces. No parking will be permitted on East Road or any other adjoining roads within the vicinity of the property. If the parking lot is insufficient to park the persons that seek to park on the property, then there will be an alternative off-site parking lot provided. The south end of the parking lot shall be screened to block lights and the headlights of the cars parked in the lot by four to five foot, fire burn and planted substantially in accordance with the plan. Because the house and barn will be used for the same principal use, that is for a museum and a library, it'll be considered one principal use. They will be used for a museum. The next thing is that no variance will be required with respect to any setbacks because they're pre-existing structures. The prior variance granted to Mr. Two-Hill back when he was developing the property back in 2006 will be withdrawn and will no longer have any effect, and the prior approved subdivision plan will no longer have any effect. The impervious surface previously granted as part of that zoning hearing board application was 26.8%. The impervious surface for the project envisioned here will be reduced to 24%. However, the parties acknowledge that when you're doing the actual design, there may be slight tweakings of that number, but obviously it will need to come back to the board for approvals. The, in addition, the applicant will comply with the, besides the agreement, the subdivision land development ordinance to the extent not contrary to what's in the stipulation. They will provide a paved shoulder along the front of the property on the west side of East Road, and they'll widen the driveway to accommodate the turning laning of the driveway. They will not be required to make any other road improvements. They'll prepare a, an analysis of the traffic impact that may be occasioned by museum attendance and attendance at the special events. And they will incorporate the following design criteria. There will be a landscape buffer along the boundary line between the property and Doylestown Country Club. The berm will be no less than three nor more than five feet in height. The maximum slope of the berm will be three feet to one foot. It'll meander along the rear of the property, but be located as far away as possible from the Country Club property in order to maintain as much of the area between the Doylestown Country Club property and the Stormwater Basin as undisturbed. The location and the final approval of that will be subject to during the course of the land development property. The berm shall not extend along the Malloy property line. Berm will be maintained by the property owner. They will use their best efforts to preserve existing trees, except if it's inconsistent with the stipulation or the trees are, obviously can't be saved. All existing trees within the buffer yard on the common property line and the adjacent Malloy property shall be preserved, except if their dead or diseased. A six-foot-high beige plastic fence will be installed along the property line. I assume that's along the Malloy property. The lighting standards for the parking lot should not exceed 15 feet in height, will comply with the township's criteria. The lighting levels shall be less than .3-foot candles in the parking lot. All parking lot lighting shall utilize non-glare lights focused downward similar to those across the street at the barn complex. No light shall produce any glare off the premises. No bare direct light sources shall be relevant, shall be visible. Only diffused reflective light shall be visible beyond the property lines. Stormwater that generally flows from the southeastern, southernmost corner of the property near the common boundary line of 202 shall be managed in accordance with the township's ordinance. There'll be no more direct discharge now than there would after the development. Township acknowledges that obviously there's no fully engineered plan has been prepared, but once it does, that should be reasonable respect, any relief that may be necessary from the subdivision land development ordinance. The plan shall be submitted within one year of the approval of the stipulation by the court, and at the conclusion of the review, the township agrees if it's in accordance with the ordinances in the stipulation, it will give approval. The hours of operation shall be 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., seven days a week, but they will not apply to the several permitted special events. At a minimum for security, a gate will be installed at the driveway entrance to the property, which will be locked when the museum is not open. They'll be permitted to hold eight one-day special events serving museum in any one calendar year. Of those four, of those special events, no more than four events may be held outdoors. Special events that are held outside will be, end no later than 10:00 p.m. Special events indoors may end no later than 11:00 p.m. Property may not be leased to third parties for special events such as weddings. They will provide the Malloy's at least seven days prior notice of any events, and should parking occur across the street in the farm complex, the applicant will provide traffic controls, including utilization of police or fire police. No theatrical productions will occur on the property, but it will not preclude focal performances for any of the special fundraising events, which are limited to the number that I mentioned. There'll be no food court or food prepared on the museum, however, it will not prohibit a snack bar within the museum, nor will prohibit during special events, food. As I mentioned before, once this is approved, the development proceeds, the prior four-lot subdivision will be deemed withdrawn and of no further effect. In addition, the bed and breakfast use will be discontinued once the museum opens. There will be a facade easement granted in favor of the township to protect the integrity of the exterior portion of the house and the barn, the form of that to be mutually acceptable to the parties, and shall be recorded at the time of the recording of the final land development plans. The applicant shall reimburse the township for attorney's fees to date of $43,667. In addition, the developer, or the applicant agrees they will not apply for exemption from real estate taxes, and they are also agreeing by issuing a stipulation to release the township from any liability related to the series of events that have given rise to where we are today with respect to the stipulation. And lastly, the parties, when it's approved, agree to submit the stipulation for approval by a judge to make sure that the terms and conditions are enforced. Mr. Van Louveney, on behalf of your client, have I correctly recited the content of the stipulation? Not every word, but the content?
Yes, you have.
And Mr. Malloy, you're one of the participants, so do you agree that I've correctly stated what has been discussed and talked about among the parties?
Among the--
Yes. So that is the sum and substance of the matter for your review and consideration today.
I don't see anyone from the Country Club here. Have they been reviewed? Has this been passed by them?
Mr. Harris has been representing the Malloy's and the Doylestown Country Club. He actually has been in touch with me. He--
Okay. It's not clear from this, that, from this signature line that he is representing, he's representing intervenors, but not--
Well, I think--
Interveners were the, were the Malloy's and, yeah, they were the only two intervenors.
Yes.
Very good. The only other thing I would correct is that on, you refer to the barn and then the farm. On page nine, it's the Farm Office Complex, not the Barn Office Complex.
All right. I'll make that adjustment.
And the only other thing I have to say about that, there's a reference to parking at the Farm Office Complex. That would be a separate understanding between the owner and the museum, not part of--
Not township issue.
Not a township issue.
I agree. That was not something that we drafted. It was--
Yeah, it's not to be implied from this, or taken from this, that that's a done deal from that--
We understand that. As I said, that came from township comments, not from our comments.
Understood.
Okay.
Does the board have any comments?
I just have one comment. I would think, in full disclosure, I think Mr. Two-Hill is going to mention he's going to recuse and why he's going to recuse, or maybe he's not.
From the vote?
Yeah, of course, as from the first, from the Hammerstein's application over the last, what, two years?
He can do it.
Pursuant to, inconsistent with the last two years' hearings and deliberations, I've recused myself from any vote.
Why?
I'll do that again.
Why?
Because I was a previous owner of the property.
There's a subdivision plan that--
I think that's one of the exhibits, too.
Right. There was a subdivision plan that Mr. Two-Hill had approved before he was a supervisor that still has certain vitality, for lack of a better word.
We also introduced into evidence Mr. Colallo at the zoning hearing board hearing agreements between Ms. Cole, the property owner, and Mr. Two-Hill. So there is a record, record documentation of his interest, and I think for that reason, it is appropriate for him to recuse himself.
And I appreciate you clearing that up.
Okay. And anybody else here? All right, comments from the audience. Would you please take the microphone and identify yourself and where you live for the, for the record, please?
Yeah, I live on Townview Drive, a couple blocks away. I have a question. They said no weddings.
Who are you?
Oh, Shelley Dunn.
Thank you.
I'm a neighbor.
Thank you.
They said no weddings. What about Bar Bot Mitzvahs? That's just the--
No special events, other than, other than museum-related only. It says--
Okay.
--wet. It was weddings was such as weddings.
Such as weddings, okay. Valet parking, where are those cars going to park? Where are they parking valet people?
That's their problem at this point.
They don't park on public streets. They may park at the Borough Penny Chapman. I don't know where they're going to park, but they have--
So they won't park in any of our neighborhoods?
Correct.
Okay, that's guaranteed.
Does it say East Road and public streets?
Yes, East Road and public streets--
And any of the housing developments?
Right.
Yep.
Your development streets are public, and that's the, Mr. Garten-- Your development streets are public, and that's the, Mr. Garten had requested on behalf of the township, which we agreed to.
Okay. Other questions or comments? Sir?
My name is Stanley Dunn. I, well, she does.
Good to know.
The document that was just read includes the name Malloy a number of times. Nothing in this world is permanent, and if the Malloy's decide, for instance, to sell their property, is it possible to combine those properties and change, therefore ask for a new capability for that property?
Well, it's going to become a court order, number one. And number two, in the event they would do that, it would be all, it would be a brand-new application, but they've already agreed this court order takes precedence as far as the Hammerstein site. So they would be precluded. And the Malloy's site is residential. If they couldn't do anything at all, that would be an expansion of the museum use on the Malloy property.
But they could combine it and ask for a variance for the Malloy property and come up with a brand-new--
You can always ask for a variance, but this designates what happens to the Hammerstein site.
And perhaps also to answer another question, I think you have, what happens if the museum stops being a museum?
Right.
They comply with the zoning ordinance.
Have to comply with the ordinance, and that's covered in--
With all permitted uses.
That's also covered in the stipulation.
So that's the only use of the--
I think one of the things, Jeff read it, but you might have missed it, too, is any variances, the Toohill subdivision disappears. Any variance that were granted in connection with that subdivision has no further force and effect. So the applicant would need to start over entirely with applications under existing ordinances, just as Mr. Garten said. That wouldn't preclude somebody from asking for relief, but we think it's very unlikely that that's going to happen if this museum gets off the ground. My clients are obviously very anxious to start the fundraising so they can make this a reality, that's it.
That it's a museum now doesn't give any future potential owner any more swat. He would have to go, or she would have to go back to what the original zoning is permitted there. I understand.
Is there some legal definition of what a museum is?
Yes.
Yes.
It's in the zoning ordinance, in fact.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Please.
Hi, my name is Lisa Mergan. I live over on Halk Road, and I am two houses in from East Road. So one of the questions I have is, obviously you've thought, I'm thrilled with the plan, and we've scrapped the theater, and that's huge for us. One of my biggest concerns has always been the parking on our street. So you can, what are we going to do to deter that, and how are we going to, how are we going to keep people from parking off the street?
Well, obviously, I assume that you will be the first to experience it, and we will have the police department, as well as others, monitor that. And if we see that there's a proliferation of vehicles from New York, or wherever else the case may be, that aren't cars from, that were bought at Thompson Toyota someplace locally that look like they're not residents, then we would back in court, beating up the museum. So you'll be the first line of defense in letting us know.
How many employees are they looking to have?
That hasn't been determined.
I mean, personally, and I just wanted to go on the record, I think 35 parking spaces for a museum. Obviously, you have an idea of how many people need to generate business on a daily basis or weekly or yearly basis. I mean, divide that by seven days, and 35 parking spaces, I just don't think it's enough.
Well, the only thing I've commented on before, and I'm not a traffic expert, but if you look at the Mercer Museum on a daily basis, there are very seldom 35 cars parked there on a daily basis. And that's a much bigger operation than this. They expanded the parking lot, but I've never seen it full, except for special events.
And the cars will be going in and out. Someone may come to the museum at 9:00, and they're leaving at 10:30. They're done, and someone coming at 11:00, so it's not all 35.
Do we have an idea of what we're doing with buses, or like, obviously--
We don't think that's going to be necessary. My client, the ordinance requires more parking spaces. We believe, we were asked to provide fewer. We believe that fewer is adequate, or we wouldn't have agreed to the request.
Please. No, you have to use the microphone.
It's been almost two years for this. Two questions. In protection for the neighbors on the other side of the bypass in the development there, would it be wise to consider, and there's somebody who has to pay for this, but on the special events, to post no parking signs? As, for example, the Catholic Church on Sunday on Ashland Street, because that gets very busy, the police department's out there early in the morning, post these signs, and then they have to pick them up. The second question I have, we're concerned about the buses in ingress and egress on site, particularly in front of our property. If you're having this, excuse me, the buses and the valet parking, I mean, these are not 10-person buses, I would assume. Is that right, John?
Well, the buses that we're talking about, primarily, we anticipate some school trips, that sort of thing. Those are the buses we're talking about, not for special events. I mean, that's--
All right, well--
It's sort of buses that we're trying to accommodate, that's--
Any discussion about widening East Road there along the entrance to--
Well, there's a discussion that it has to be--
We're going to do some driveway winding.
And that'll be subject review by the township engineer to determine that it's adequate. And we'll have to provide turning templates, but obviously, we can't encroach on your property, nor would there be any reason to do that. It's not that, there's no reason to do that.
All right. Well, I think you've covered the rest of it pretty well.
The only thing I would say about no parking signs is, if one of the neighbors is having a graduation party, and they're having a special event over at the library, over at the museum, I don't know that they want to have all their attendees at the graduation party getting a ticket, but we'll, we'll monitor the situation clearly.
I mean, my concern is that the protection of those people--
So are we.
And if it's a continuous thing, and--
It won't be.
People, if they're from New York, or New Jersey, or wherever, out of the area, they're going to ignore this a lot of times, and they say, oh, go ticket us anyway, and they're going to chase them? Who knows? Right? All right.
I live not too far from us, so I'll keep an eye on everything.
I expect that more than one person will be keeping an eye on things.
Thank you, Mr. Malloy. Anybody else?
Joe has a question.
Go ahead. No, you need to go to the microphone, so we can hear you.
We can always get the family to come in and take care of those illegal parking people.
Get the family.
Or we can key the cars. Either way--
No, don't say that. First person they're going to come now, to you, if you see car keys.
What are you going to do about noise? Is you going to set a decibel level as far as--
We have a township ordinance about noise.
What kind of special events? Can you give us one or two examples?
It says fundraisers, and that's what we've agreed to limit it to.
That's what, only fundraisers?
That's it. That's it.
Or they could have some singing.
But that would be in conjunction with the fundraiser. That'd be the only, only thing we've asked for.
The noise might be some solos.
Beautiful soloists.
Some beautiful solos. Lyrical soprano-type solos.
As long as, yeah, I agree. Okay.
And I don't, I think you probably heard, Mr. Garten, but one of the things in the second go-round of reviews by the Malloy's and the country club was a request for hours on the special events, which had not been included previously, and we've agreed to that. I would say after discussion with Stephanie also on that subject.
All right. Any other comments, sir? Please take the microphone. Identify yourself and your address.
John Arnold from Halk Road. First of all, I'm very pleased overall with proceedings in regard to Hammerstein property. Something that bothers me a little bit is, Stephanie brought up a situation during one of the meetings, and one of the applicants made a statement that a museum standing alone does not generally succeed. And that's, that's in our local papers, and I think it's a matter of minutes in one of the meetings that we've had. My question is, why now, suddenly it becomes sustainable, when even one of the applicants had said, a standalone museum cannot succeed?
First of all, let me address that. I can, I can address that, because that came out of some of the zoning hearing board testimony. And there had been, and my client made this clear, I think, at the, at the hearings. Before I was approached, before the township was approached, there had been a feasibility study done, which had suggested that it was very, very seldom that museums, standalone museums, survived, and the recommendation had been made to attempt to get the theater approval to assist in the support of the museum. It was not a statement, Clark Blanch, that said, no museum standing alone ever succeeds. And there are, we could probably give you a long list of ones that have. That was a financial consultant, an outside consultant, who said, we think that would be the safest way for you to proceed, but not the only way. And that's the reason they asked us, asked me to file the application that I filed. It didn't go through, and in the interest of making the vision of preserving the farm a reality, they reconsidered, thought things through. It took a few months for us to come back, and we started, as Jeff said, about a year ago with the neighbors first, trying to get a dialogue toward a settlement. We think we have a good settlement now. We think that the impact on the township and the residents of this plan, frankly, will be less than it would have been with four houses there. There are no new buildings being constructed in connection with what we're doing now. So the integrity, to the extent that the Hammerstein Highland Farm retains any integrity, the condemnation kind of makes sure we don't have complete integrity, it will be preserved by this application. We think that the impact on the residents and the township will be minimal, and we certainly hope so. My clients intend to be good neighbors.
Would one of the supervisors respond to my question?
It was, it was our earliest hope that this would become a museum, because that way we could preserve, you know, help preserve the property, and we're glad that they were able to, according to their review of the situation, they're, they think they can make a go of it. And we'll do everything we can to support that, as residents, and help the community, help them perhaps with the fundraiser, you know, individually, I would. So I think we'll all make an effort to make it work for them, and, because this is something that we wanted from the very beginning.
This is a good agreement.
Yeah, overall, it's a very good agreement. So I don't know if that answers your question. I, they think it can make it work.
Well, it's just a concern, not so much a question, is that--
Yeah, well, of course, every new enterprise is a concern, but if we all, as members of this community, support this endeavor, then I think it'll be a success.
Yeah, thank you.
I just want to just kind of put out there that I'm, you know, really happy to see where we are now. It's been a long process, and I know it's been contentious at times, and I think it's just nice to, you know, I know that there's a couple still questions. I don't think we're ever going to walk away without a couple of questions, but we're in a much different place than we were, and, you know, I'm happy to see that, that we are going to do this, because I think it is a tremendous benefit to the township.
Any further comment?
I would just like to say, echo that. I was never against a museum. I thought the museum would be an extremely great addition to Doylestown, and the tour of the house would be fantastic. My only concern over the last couple of years is that it met with our laws and our ordinances. So I'm happy to make a recommendation, or a motion to approve the stipulated agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further comment or questions?
Just one question. Just for clarification, since the stipulation calls for Mr. Garten's signature, could that, was that motion to be construed as authorization for him to sign?
Make that modification, if you would, Mr. Collette. I'm authorized to sign this stipulation.
I make, in addition to the motion, that Mr. Garten has the authority to sign the stipulated agreement on behalf of the board supervisor.
Who seconded?
I did.
Do you accept the amendment?
Yes.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Van Luvene--
Thank you very much.
--for working so hard to get this done. And Jeffrey, thank you.
Mr. and Mrs. Malloy, we're, I have to say, and the country club also were cooperative. You, township certainly worked hard to improve the stipulation, and I think together we have a stipulation that is workable, and also will ensure that the museum will be a benefit to the community.
All right, thank you. Thank you, neighbors, for coming. You're welcome to stay. We're moving on to another issue.
The next item, and I know the board would like to move expeditiously, and I know that Mr. Zavada hates to move expeditiously, but this project has been around for a while, and I'm prepared to--
Please leave quietly, we're still in business. We're still on, we're still conducting business.
Take your entourage out.
Thank you. Congratulations.
If you stand and have control, I will. This is the site called The Town's Edge, also known as the Getzberger Site. They've requested final plan approval. It's tax parcel 9-9-58. The applicant proposes to remove the existing residential dwelling, convert, convert the existing barn into a recreational structure, and construct 12 two-story residential condominiums with garage facilities located at the basement level for each of the units. The plans before you were prepared by Gilmore Associates, were dated May 30, 2014, and were last revised July 22, 2016. Your planning commission recommended approval at its August 22, 2016 meeting, subject to certain conditions. If you were inclined to approve the application, will be subject to the following conditions: continued compliance with conditions of preliminary plan approval to the extent not resolved; two, compliance with the Bucks County Planning Commission report dated August 12, 2016; compliance with the Pickering Courts and Somerson letter dated August 4, 2016, including the obligation to record a declaration of covenants restrictions for the project with respect to the maintenance of trees noted in paragraphs four and five of that letter; compliance of the Boucher and James Review Letter dated August 3 of 2016; compliance of the Penone Associates Report dated June 20, 2016; compliance with the Michael Baker Report dated August 12, 2016; deferred till preliminary, till final was the midlock pedestrian crosswalk, but based on the comments from PennDOT, that it cannot be installed; next finding and execution of confidential security agreements in a form satisfactory to me; and last, receipt of all permit improvement agencies having jurisdiction, including PennDOT, Bucks County Conservation District. Mr. Zavada, do you accept those conditions?
I do.
Questions from the board?
No.
We'll entertain a motion to approve it.
Make a motion, we approve final land development for the enclave at Town's Edge.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. You know what? Off the record, if I didn't live two houses away from the soon-to-be Hammerstein Museum, I'd move into the enclave. It sounds like a beautiful development. Thank you. Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, we're moving on to the Hazard Mitigation Plan Municipal Adoption Resolution. See attached?
Yes, this is the county's Hazard Mitigation Plan. Sinclair and I participated in the process of preparing and working with the-- Can you hear me now? Okay. So we participated in the county's Hazard Mitigation Plan, which we've participated in in the past, and this is their update for 2016, and we recommend the board approve the resolution.
All right. Motion to approve the resolution?
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Public sewer requests a hookup on 264 Iron Hill Road. Do you see any issues with this?
I do not. They are having, certainly having a very difficult time with their on-site septic system. They've already paid the fee to connect, there's public sewer out there, and the health department's recommending connection as well.
Very good. Is there a motion to approve the connection?
Make a motion to approve.
Fall in favor?
Second.
Fall in favor?
Aye.
And then the snow removal bids for, oh, it's a rental equipment.
Yes, the snow removal--
With an operator in town.
Right. And you have the motion suggested that we move to contract with the rental snow equipment with the operators, B&amp;E Carts LLC, Little Digger Excavating, and Hardscape and Puppy Dog Landscape Corporation, snow removal from the township roads during the winter season, November 30th of this year through April of next year.
And I know everyone had this question. What happens if we have snow on, in May? It's a contract we have, can we renew?
Change order.
It's not going to happen.
Puppy Dog will come out and do it. April fifteenth, I was, I know.
We had snow one year.
I know.
It's not happening.
And we've actually had snow in, like, early November, too, so I don't go there.
All right, so, all right, as it is.
I just have a question for Dick. I mean, do we get the same, the ones that get the bid? Is it the same guys every year? Was, I don't know who we had this past year.
We had Puppy Dog last year.
We had Puppy Dog?
Pretty much.
Pretty much the same? We're good to try to get the same one, so that, if it works out that way, but if it doesn't, it doesn't.
Some have been ten years, I'm sure.
Okay, okay. Good.
All right, is there, did I hear a motion to approve the bid?
Did I make a motion?
No, yeah.
I made a motion on the last one.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor of the snow removal equipment bids?
Aye.
Aye. And then the next is the tree pruning and takedown bids.
And we would recommend in the amount of nine thousand, eight hundred and twenty, the firm of Jimmy's Tree and Landscape Contractors, and in the amount of nine thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars.
Have you, we worked with them before?
Yes, we have.
Oh, good, okay. Is there a motion?
Now, we had, didn't last meeting, we approve a tree trimming with bear, right?
Yes, we did.
Is this a different?
This is a different bunch of trees, yes. We had fifty thousand budgeted. The last contractor was around twenty-two. So I wrote another contract real quick to expend more money just to trim more trees. So this is the second one.
Oh, so you're...
Not the same trees.
You're using up the fifty thousand dollars quicker.
Is there more trees to do?
Oh, yes.
So he's just getting more done.
Okay.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the bid?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then the bills list for October 4th. Anyone had a chance to look at it?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, moving on to announcements, we're going to be, our next meeting is October 18th at 7:00 PM. We're going to be meeting with the Ways and Means Committee directly after this meeting tonight. The board of supervisors are going to hold an additional budget session meeting on October 18th at 4:00 PM here. Please come. We're going to be closed Monday, October 10th for Columbus Day. Bucks County Association of Township Officials Education Series, Education Series is tackling the county's opiate crisis, is here on October 12, 2016, 7:00 PM to 8:00 PM. And I have some, I do have some flyers, so I'll make sure they're out there. For everyone to attend, I hope all the supervisors attend, the important part of this presentation is that we're going to be giving away, or they will be giving away Narcan for all those who've become Narcan-trained. Century Trail Dedication Ribbon Cutting is Thursday, October 13th from 4:00 to 5:00